Hey Chris, can you guys hear me okay? It's Liz.
I can hear you. Can you hear us?
Oh, great. Yes.
Council will call the meeting to order for the record. It is May 10th, 2022 at 4:30 PM. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
One change for tonight's agenda. We are going to move number 18, item 18, Police Department, their budget amendment discussion up ahead of number 16. So it'll become 16 and 16 becomes 17, 17 becomes 18. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as amended during our discussion. If not, on favor, see by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor seen by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is adopted. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will go right into item 13, which is the Meridian Dairy and Stock Show Annual Presentation to City Council. And I see that Hans just walked in. If he's going to be the one that's going to be presenting. It's perfect timing. Perfect timing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Hans, if you can grab that microphone up to you.
Let's say their names for the record and then really get into that mic.
Mike Magratiyo, 2623 South Hillis Place.
Hans Bruin, President of Meridian Dairy Board, 6627 Airport Road.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just handed out a little three pages. The first page is kind of what's new this year. The second page is our daily schedule. And then the final page is the specialty construction supply for the traffic control at the parade. Now, just about an hour ago, I got an email from ACHD. And I have not had a chance to look at it. They had a few suggestions, so I passed it right on to Jeremy from Construction. So I'm not sure if that's going to impact the final amount or not. As you can see, it's gone up again and from last year. You can see there's two amounts, one with volunteers and one without. Well, I think they got that backwards. Because the one without volunteers is we really don't use volunteers anymore. It's just getting to be too dangerous. So we have flaggers. So the total amount was, at this point, is 9249 is what they what their quote is. Couple of quick things. We have, instead of the pancake feed, we do an ice cream special with Reed's Dairy. We'll be handing out free ice cream for about two hours for 300 people, whatever comes first. We're going to try to get the marching band from the different West Ada School District involved. We got, I think, like a five feet trophy or something common, a traveling trophy. And Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you will be available after the parade or sometime to hand that out. That would be great. And the Meridian Chamber of Commerce is getting involved again to doing the cow art, if you remember from years, years back. So that's kind of, that's pretty exciting. A little bit more music and then we have some other entertainments. Mike, if you want to add some.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Your staff has been great this year to work with, or last year and even this year. Garrett's done a great job. Emily, she did fantastic job working with us with the MOU. Justin, since Stacy's left, has been doing great. Get the handout there. We can kind of see what we've been up to this year. We've got good events, good support. Really appreciate you guys' involvement as far as sponsorship for your involvement with the police. And I've read what you guys spend this year, last year, and it was, it's just, we really appreciate you guys' support. So what we're going to do is we're going to put your guys' logo as part of our sponsors. So appreciate that. Let's see, this year's theme is Party Till the Cows Come Home. So that's been a hot one to talk about. Yeah, and like I said, sponsorship is up for this year. It seems like really people are really involved and want to be involved in this parade this year. So you guys are a big part of that. So want to thank you guys for that. Yeah, and Bill and Emily, we've been working on a, it was a memorandum, memorandum of understanding, which I think is great. You know, this is a combination of Luke and Bill trying to get something on paper in case something happened to us or one of you guys, it's just something to help us, you know, throughout the years, thought that was a great idea together. So thank you for the continued involvement on that. Yeah.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Couple of comments and then ask Bill to provide some insight for the council. One, thanks for coming. I'm excited for Dairy Days and you guys are too. And I just, I want to appreciate you recognizing kind of the city's ongoing investment in this event. And listening to us as a sponsor, we're happy to support this. And I think it's just an ongoing opportunity for us to continue to build our partnership. I love having you guys come before us and give us an update about these events. I love seeing that the chamber's back, being involved. Ice cream social sounds awesome. I know you guys maybe want to bring the pancake feedback at a later point in time. But ice cream, for me as a kid, one of my most favorite parts about the Dairy Days Parade is when the ice cream truck would come through before the parade and get ice cream. So I like that you're kind of going back to that. Mr. Mayor, if it's possible, Bill, do you kind of want to give us maybe an update about kind of how the MOU is progressing and what's, what that's all intending to accomplish?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we did send a draft MOU. Ms. Kane from my office had prepared it. I think we were just waiting on comments back. It was, as Mike said, it was intended to sort of memorialize the various services that are provided by the city. The one number that we have to somewhat anticipate in the budget process is the cost for the traffic control. It does tend to change. It's an ACHD mandate requirement, so we don't have an option to do it differently. And Hans is correct. We, we don't recommend people for large scale events use volunteers because when it's dangerous, sometimes volunteers lose interest, they walk off the job because they're, it's hot and it's late and it's long and they don't want to. And it's hard to get people to just commit to it. So using people that are actually getting paid to do it and have done it before is a lot safer and a lot more practical. And again, it always feels to many other folks that aren't involved in the parades, other than the dairy board who's doing it directly and the police who deal with it. Nobody notices any of those things until something bad happens and then everybody has a question on why didn't you do something about that? So we do, we do have to look at what the reality is of the expense of the traffic control. And that we are pretty well governed by a single entity that does this mostly for the valley, for different, for different groups. So they're very good at it. They're very seasoned. They're very knowledgeable on what's necessary, on what types of things. And then we debrief at the end of the parades, year after action, what's next year. We do build a portion into our budget. Most of the things on that list that you have in the memo are things that we have previously provided. They don't have a specific they don't have a specific dollar out of pocket. They're just built into our overtime. It's the cost for this that we have it in the budget. And I can't tell you off the top of my head what it is. Last year, it was $8,900, I think was about the number. And so the council authorized, I think, up to 10 last year because of, weren't sure there'd be any last minute things. But it has gone. If you look at that memo, every year it goes up slightly. Obviously based on costs, personnel, whatever is needed, there's always going to be some additional costs. So that's really kind of what this conversation has usually taken is, when did the number come out? What did we put in? Do we authorize the additional expense?
And we, we did get a request from a different traffic control outfit to put in a bid. And as of today, I have not heard a back from them, just to see, you know, are we in the ballpark or not? And we did, we did talk over that document that you sent over. And we have our attorney just take a quick look at it, but it looks really good.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I want to thank Bill and Emily and Dairy Show Board. I think that's, that's our goal. We've, each year, this has kind of been, we're trying to figure out how it works. And I think putting together this MOU ensures greater transparency and easy use for the Dairy Show Board to know what the expectations are. City knows what you're prepared to do. I guess, Mr. Mayor, a question for either you or Mr. Nary. It sounds like Hans got some updated information from ACHD that may impact this estimate. But if it, if it comes back in under 10, and there's no additional action from the council, if it's, if it's over 10, then maybe we would need to at least discuss a budget amendment at a later point in time. Is that?
Mr. Members of council, I think Councilman Cavanagh, right now, what I'm understanding is the budget, the good budget is about nine. Last year was 87. I think nine's in the budget. So if it comes in over nine, we'll have to come back. I think most of this is the council's comfort level that we have a general idea what it is. It might be a little bit less, could be a little bit more, but it's going to be around this.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
One good thing about this, this parade is, is the identity that keeps Meridian who it is, I believe. And so I really look forward to this event and all of the programs and the committee, community involvement that takes place during these three days. People, you know, citizens want to keep Meridian, Meridian, you know, the, the major concern that I hear from citizens as it relates to this is we need to keep our identity. There's nothing more Meridian than the Dairy Days Parade. So grateful to be a part of it and thanks, Mike and Hans and crew for all you do.
All right. And with that, we will see a MOU come back at a later date and time. And for now, we'll move on to item 14, which is Resolution 22-2326. Counsel, you had a discussion last week. Mr. Nary, is there anything that you'd like to add from that discussion?
Mr. Members of council, I mean, again, we're here to really answer any questions. The whole purpose of this item and action item is to begin the process to do the land transfer. So that's, this isn't setting anything. This isn't, this isn't disposing of any property at this point. It's just setting a motion in the process to make that happen at a future date. The, the land transfer and the final cost and price and all that stuff can be set later. This is really just a ballpark figure number that we're using. But that can be finalized at a later time. But really, it's to begin the process because there's some noticing that's required. And different things are required for the land transfer to happen. And the anticipation is in June. The process says to start soon.
Mr. Mayor.
Any questions? Councilman Strater.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to report back a little bit. So Dave Winder, Ashley Squires and I met with River Caddis. And one of the concerns I had was just making sure that they seem to be well capitalized. So we had a good meeting with some of their bank relationships and determined based on the covenants they meet in other loans that they're well capitalized. They have a good history of completing projects, including in 2008. I have a couple of things I wanted to check in on that actually called John about after our call. But just wanting to make sure on the record that River Caddis intends to close the land acquisition at the same time that they line up their financing commitments. I think that's an important thing to hear from them today. And then I just wanted to confirm on the record that the demolishing of the community center is part of the site work. So it won't be demolished first in the process. So that would take place after they started expending their equity. I wanted to check on those two items if possible today.
If you'd like to come forward and reply.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Liz. The answer to both of those questions is yes. So yes to the community center not being demolished before closing, or that that doesn't happen first. And that we are intending on working with MDC on closing both financing and the purchaser, closing on the land as well, same time.
Thank you. That's perfect. I just think it helps clarify that for everybody. Those are some of the key risks that I felt were just something to tie up. So thanks for confirming that and for spending the time on, on those items. Mr. Mayor, did we need action today on this resolution? Or I was a little confused about what Bill was saying. But I didn't want to get going there until other people have a chance to ask their questions. But I was a little confused about what action is being taken today.
Yeah, we will want to, want to have a motion on the resolution at the appropriate time. I know there's other council members that would like to speak, so.
Yep.
Council, any additional questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Steve's here and I'd asked him to maybe just come to council today, just provide an update to the council about the current programs that are being offered in the community center and what the plans are for where they're going to go, how they're going to continue to operate, should council move forward. Maybe Steve, you want to just give council kind of an update about what your plans are?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of council. Gratefully reached out to me this morning and told me this was coming because that gave me a chance to reach out to our coordinator, rec coordinator over classes in camp. So I could find out, you know, where things were at, a little more specificity. We're still figuring out where classes would go. I could, I'll tell you, our, our primary solution is that now that we have the pool building, there's a, that, that room on the second floor that we can use for many of the classes. We also have classes at the home court, but it's already fully, you know, it's fully programmed. We, there are, the update that I got just a few hours ago is that there's basically four classes that we don't currently have a home for. They include fencing, jazzercise, yoga, and there's multiple yoga classes and, and you, some youth art classes that we're still looking for a home for. We've looked at everything from locations that might be rented in the future. Don't know if that's a good option or not, but I know that Rite Aid down on Main Street has been, has downsized and have some space available for, for lease. But that comes at a cost, obviously. So we're looking at what's free first. We have the chambers in the audience and while we have no desire or need to move them out of their current space any faster than they choose to on their own. If and when they do choose to move, one option is to renovate that space and maybe blow out some walls and, and, but that's always going to take a budget and some additional time. So we're also looking at schools. We have agreement with the school district. But things like, you know, yoga classes that happen during the day can't happen when school's in session during the day. So there's, that's not a, that's not a match. So we do, we're actively working on solutions. We have found a solution for, I'd say, the majority of classes that are being displaced, but we still have some that don't have a home. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Thank you. Council, any additional questions for Mr. Stateaway?
Then at this point in time, I would entertain a motion if anyone is willing to make one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. This has been a long process, started back in 2019. And I think we're at, to a point where we're going to see some things happen. And something I think we're all going to be very pleased with when it's, when it's completed. So, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of Resolution 22-2326, which will convey certain real property as identified in the document to the Meridian Development Corporation.
Second motion.
I have a motion of second to approve Resolution 22-2326. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I'll be voting no on this. I think this is a really, really great project, really exciting. It's frustrating for me because I think a great project is being overshadowed by a loss to our community. I think that either the city or the development team have an obligation to our citizens to bring a plan, either collectively or, or on their own, that communicates to our citizens what our plan is for a community center and a park in downtown. And until we've got that plan in place, or at least some direction about where we're headed, I, I can't in good conscience vote for, to begin the process to transfer of our assets. I said it last week. I just don't see how our taxpayers are winning when it comes to this project. And which is disappointing because I really want to be a cheerleader for this. But without those plans in place, I can't be supportive.
Council, any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Yeah, just a comment. Yeah, I'm supportive of it. I feel like adding the population downtown is a really critical step to justify future investments in downtown. And so I understand Councilman Cavanagh's concern. I think there's a little bit of a chicken and egg question. But I have faith that the Parks Department is going to figure this out with our new community center plans in the future. And I think it behooves us to figure out how to make that space happen downtown. But I also feel like the economic development aspect is really hard to quantify, but incredibly important for this urban area to become a truly urban area. And to justify those future investments, we've got to have a pretty robust population using our downtown to make it really dynamic. And so I like this project. I feel like it's really going to add to the feel downtown. And I like the festival street. I really think it's the best market project that we could get at this point.
If I could echo some of Councilman Strater's, I understand the frustration. We would all like to have it all figured out and lined out from that standpoint. But it's kind of like when you want a road expansion too. Sometimes you got to close down the road and why, and it's painful. And then we get to the endpoint and it's a great resolution. And I think the harder that, you know, I have at least expressed my opinion that I think it is incumbent upon the city to provide a way to bring back that lost green space. If that's what our goal and outcome is, while it may not be in the same old case, a small nice addition was the work that was just done right over here on the island. We did bring a green space into downtown. Not a great replacement in a lot of ways, but it is still green space. Otherwise, why, you know, why, it was, it's a nice addition to downtown in terms of getting rid of a blighted piece of property and bringing green space that can be utilized. I'm not going to say that we can go have picnics. We're going to put the neos there. That's not what I'm saying. But it is part of that process of redefining what our downtown is. That's really where I think we're going to. I think this will, it is a comment upon us. And, you know, Steve and I've had that conversation to find that replacement, to bring it into, into downtown, whatever that feels like.
Council, any additional questions or any additional statements? Would you like to hear from the press director at this point in time? He's very polite.
I just want to offer two thoughts. One, we are actively working, as you know, on the community center feasibility study. And there is a bit of a chicken and egg. I'd love nothing more than to have lined out the, the plan for the new community center before the old one goes away. But that's not the way the, that it's lining up. We, the, the Green Play consultants are coming back to town next week. I'm hoping to have them in front of you next week to give an update on the process and how things are, are going in advance of what will be a future public meeting on the, on the same topic, to make sure that we're in alignment to for what will be presented. So Green Play will be in town next week. We are actively moving forward on, on concepts. And I think my, and then my second point is just that, and I'm sure we can work this out, but based on whatever happens with the timing of the transfer versus the demolition, as Councilman Strater was talking about, you know, we will obviously hope to continue using it until the demolition happens, which currently I understand roughly next spring. So we'll, we'll use it, you know, this fall, this winter. We'll figure out when the, the transfer happens. And we want to prepare in advance for those class movements that will need to happen. But we do hope to continue using it until the demolition does need to happen. So that was it.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question for either you or Mr. Nary. Once the action is before the council actually transfer the property, does that action also involve a public hearing?
Yes.
Counsel, any other comments? That's the court call the roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Borton.
I'm staying.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Four ayes, one no. Resolution is agreed to. Thank you. Continue, continue to look forward to working on this project and finding solutions to the issues that were brought up. Next item up is item 15, which is our Public Works Department, which will be a summary of the April 22 Water Supply Workshop. Turn this over to Laura Lai and Mr. Radek.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, while we get our presentation pulled up. Thank you. So thanks for giving us a few minutes of your time this afternoon. So first of all, we're not asking for anything. So no decisions, just information. But I, we did want to share with you, we held a two-day water supply workshop a couple of weeks ago. And there was some really valuable information that we wanted to share with you guys and bring forward. So the last time we held one of these was in 2011. And so we thought it was really important to have another meeting to kind of say, have, have things changed? Are we still in a good, good spot? So we brought, and I want to give credit to Kyle for organizing this, some of the top water experts, scientists and water lawyers in the Treasure Valley to some of the top water experts, scientists and water lawyers in the Treasure Valley to answer some important questions and topics. So while Kyle and I might not be able to answer all of your questions, we're going to give you a really high-level flyby of what we talked about in the workshop. So our workshop's purpose sought to give us a better understanding about where water comes from in the valley, how it's used, and how that's expected to change in the future. We also really wanted to look specifically at Meridian's water supply and identify any concerns or issues with our supply now or in the future. And we wanted to identify any current or future mitigation methods that might help us with our overall water picture. So if you're curious about overall water supply in the Treasure Valley, BSU has put together a really outstanding resource called the Treasure Valley Water Atlas. This gives really great detail and graphics that talk about the fate of water in the Treasure Valley. And many of the graphics on the Water Atlas are used in this presentation tonight. This can also be a really good resource to point residents to as it's easy to follow and understand and kind of talks about all the different water uses in the valley. So as we talk about water in the Treasure Valley, it's important to remember that without our network of irrigation systems, including the Boise River, we naturally are in a high desert area that receives on average 11 inches of rain per year. However, because the Treasure Valley has been highly modified with a complex system of canals and drains over the years, we've really transformed the valley into what it is today. So in order to understand water in the Treasure Valley, you have to understand that this is really a story about two river basins, the Upper Basin and the Lower Basin. So when I talk about the Upper Basin, what I mean is the area above our storage reservoirs, so above Lucky Peak, Arrow Rock and Anderson reservoirs. So when you look at these reservoirs, there's really distinct differences between them. So the Upper Basin is higher elevations. There's much fewer people that live in this area. It is comprised of mountains, forests and shrubland. The Lower Basin is a high desert grassland and agriculture, and we have over 750,000 people living in the Lower Basin. So the Upper Basin is a lot cooler in temperature, while the Lower Basin is much warmer. The Upper Basin is wetter. The Lower Basin is much drier. We get most of our rain and snow in the Upper Basin, which leads to the next point. Is that enough water for the Treasure Valley? And where does that water go once it leaves the Upper Basin? So in the Upper Basin, each year we get about 3.5 million acre feet of water in the Upper Basin. So right off the bat, about 1.6 million acre feet of that is lost to evapotranspiration, which is the uptake and use by plants and evaporation into the atmosphere. So really, we're getting about 2 million acre feet out of the Upper Basin that's coming into the Lower Basin. So in Public Works, we like to use a lot of acronyms, MGD, CFS, acre feet. So what is an acre foot? So an acre foot is if you took about the size of a football field, one acre, and put one foot of water on it. Estimates say that one acre foot of water serves the freshwater needs of a family of five for about a year. So if you have 750,000 people in the Treasure Valley, really, in theory, you'd only need about 200 acre feet of water to serve the freshwater needs of per year or 200,000 acre feet of water per year to serve the freshwater needs. And we're receiving about 2 million acre feet, so we should have plenty of water for the Treasure Valley, right? Well, that's where some challenges come in, is where that water goes and gets used once it goes into the Lower Basin. So the first one is timing. So most of the water in the Upper Basin should be stored as snow. If more of that comes as rain or as temperatures increase, spring runoff can come sooner and faster. What you'll see in this graph is that the majority of the water coming from the Upper Basin comes in March through June. And after that, you'll see there's not a whole lot more water coming from the Upper Basin. So what do we do to try to mitigate that? Well, we have storage. So we store some of that water in our four primary reservoirs, which are Lucky Peak, Arrow Rock, Anderson Ranch and Lake Hole. But what you'll see there is we only have between those four reservoirs about 1 million acre feet. So out of the 2 million acre feet that are coming down, we only have the ability to store about half of that. So even though we have plenty of water coming from the Upper Basin on most years, the timing and storage can be problematic. And then, once the water reaches the Lower Basin, how it's used also matters. So we have a significant network of delivery canals and return drains in the valley that have allowed us to have widespread farming and irrigation. This slide is a really interesting one that shows how water is used once it hits the Lower Basin. So in the summer, about 4,000 CFS is released from Lucky Peak, and essentially 100% of that water is diverted for irrigation use in the valley in the peak of summer. And so right off the bat, about 2,000 CFS is taken off to the New York Canal. And to give you some perspective on what a cubic foot per second is, so that equates to, so 2,000 cubic feet per second equals 1.3 billion gallons per day. And in 2021, the entire year, all of the residents of Meridian for their drinking water needs used 4.1 billion gallons. So our total year of drinking water use in Meridian is equal to about four days of flow of the New York Canal in the summer. So Meridian's water is literally a drop in the bucket as far as the Treasure Valley water picture is concerned. But how we use that water when it gets into the valley is still important. So as that water flows through the network of canals and streams, there's several things that happen to it. So about a third of it evaporates. About a third of it seeps into the ground and replenishes the shallow aquifer. And about a third of it returns back to the river and continues flowing downstream. So we've talked a lot about surface water, so let's switch now to groundwater in the valley. So the Treasure Valley also has a complex network of shallow and deep aquifers underneath the valley. And as we mentioned, the shallower aquifers are really what is replenished by the large in large part from precipitation, river flows and canal flows. Most of our municipal wells don't draw from these shallow level aquifers. So we draw our municipal water from deep aquifers that are replenished in a large part from the Upper Basin and have significant retention times, which allow for long-term aquifer stability. So most of our wells draw water from 400 to 800 feet below the surface, where water has been stored and replenished for tens of thousands of years. So these aquifers are very stable. So now that I've covered really quickly where our water supply comes from, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle to talk more about Meridian's specific drinking water system and how we manage our system and our water rights.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Our day two of the workshop was dedicated to water master planning at the city of Meridian. We covered components of the master plan that are most related to water supply, including our supply and distribution system, future water demand forecasting, the city's water rights portfolio, delivering supply where and when it's needed, and long-term water supply planning. So real quick, our water distribution system, you can see a map here, and the important parts about it are, we have five pressure zones which function as independent systems in themselves, and we have multiple wells, supply is distributed throughout the system. The last master plan, which was completed in 2018, our average day demand was 10 million gallons a day, which equates to an annual supply of 3.6 billion gallons. Again, this is high level, so we're going to move pretty quickly. When we do population and demand projection, we use data from Compass to determine how many people are going to live where in five and 20-year planning horizons. Once we know where they're going to live, we can assign their demand to pressure zones and see what you what you see with this this more complicated table on the left of the screen is demand projections by pressure zone. And we we know where those people are going to live in the future, and we know what the current per capita demand is at the time we do that forecasting, and we project that current demand for our future populations. And so you can see the whole system in this graph, the whole system demand is is represented by that. That's those straight lines that are going out and saying, hey, this much, this many more people, 112 gallons per capita per day are going to need this much more water in the future. We also get a build-out population forecast from Compass. And the current build-out population forecast is 345,000 people. So we could easily say with 345,000 people using 112 gallons per capita per day that our annual supply need at build-out is going to be 14 billion gallons of water annually, which is about 43,000 43,000 acre feet of water. But we know based on 20 years of data that you see in this graph here, that our per capita demand is decreasing with time. In fact, it's decreased a lot. It's decreased by by a factor of a half over the last 20 years. And we know it's going to continue to decrease for a while, not quite like this trend shows us, where people are going to use zero water in 2090. We know that's not going to happen. But we know it's probably going to decrease for a while, and then it'll find a bottom somewhere. So in the end, what we have for is a 43,000 acre foot estimate that is a conservatively high estimate for what the city needs for build-out annual water supply. Part of our master planning is an evaluation of our water rights portfolio. Charlie Honsinger has been our water rights attorney for over two decades, but he's retiring. So we had our new attorney, Chris Bromley from McHugh Bromley give us a presentation on the city's water rights portfolio. Analysis shows that we not only have adequate water rights to serve our current needs, but likely through build-out. So this is a fairly complicated graph with lots of lines. And what it shows you is that, number one, it seems likely that our actual use is trending to a significantly lower supply need at build-out than our 2018 forecast, which we expect. So we're really looking in the range now of 25,000 to 43,000 acre feet as a build-out need. And the second thing it's telling you is that, per Chris Bromley's analysis, we have plenty of water rights. Our cumulative water rights is shown as that line that starts way back in 1950 and kind of covers, you know, covers our our pumping. So we're able to we're able to cover not only our current needs, but our future needs, future needs, even our future conservatively high needs with the current water rights portfolio we have. So we have the water rights, but can our system deliver the water when it's needed, where it's needed? So in the workshop, we went over some of the different performance criteria for our water supply that our system needs to meet according to the Idaho Rules for Public Drinking Water Systems. And the most important criteria is that our system must be able to deliver at least the fire flow required by the International Fire Code at any given location at the highest daily system demand, the max day demand, with any pump in the system out of service. So a worst-case scenario, really. The pump that's going to help fight that fire the most has to be off. So as a matter of practice, we model every phase of every development that comes into the city to ensure that we meet this requirement. And then when we have a master plan come along, our master planning includes a modeling analysis by our consultants that really checks our work. It's an audit of the last five years of the work we've done. And as of 2018, I know I can't say something like this without saying, here's how it turned out. In 2018, the analysis concluded that with the exception of a few hydrants that were stalled in the 1970s, the fire department could go basically to any building in the city that has a city fire hydrant and be confident that they've got the fire flow they need to fight a fire at that location. So we covered our water rights, the ability to supply water anywhere within our system. And then in the workshop, we also discussed the capacity of our groundwater resource to provide for our long-term needs. And from the Treasure Valley Water Atlas presentations, we learned that an estimated 900,000 acre feet of water is put into the aquifer system every year through canal and field seepage. This doesn't even account for what the Boise River recharges naturally. City's build-out supply need of 43,000 acre feet, which is conservatively high, represents only about 5% of the water that is lost to the aquifer through irrigation practices. So as Laura Lai said, our water use is a drop in the bucket for the available supply. But even though it is a drop in the bucket, the city has been monitoring water levels in the aquifer system for over 25 years. In 2013, we commissioned a report by a professional hydrogeologist based on our groundwater monitoring that concluded that there is no foreseeable groundwater shortage for at least 50 years. Another conclusion of that report was that the aquifer system is resilient and quick to recharge. And this was proven by observations at Monitoring Well 24, which, after nine years and almost pumping almost 4 billion gallons of water at the production well, the monitoring well levels recovered to pre-pumping levels after only 18 days of not pumping the production well. In summary, 43,000 acre feet is a conservatively high number for planning purposes, what the city is going to need. It's also a very small fraction of the yearly water supply available in the Treasure Valley. And our groundwater supply appears to be sustainable long term. But even though it appears that we have an ample and sustainable water supply, way back in 2010, we started looking at the threats to our ability to supply our customers with water for the long term. David Stangle, Director of Water at Murray Smith Incorporated, was our project manager for our initial effort in 2010, and he presented to our latest workshop on that on that original work. In that original effort, we identified seven primary threats and threat levels for a 50-year planning period. We analyzed the probability and financial impact of each level and found that the magnitude of financial impact of every level on every threat was low. It was only after considering the social impact of the threat to Meridian residents that five of those threats rose to importance for mitigation consideration. You see those in this slide. Originally, the original effort produced about 44 potential mitigation actions that could impact one or more threats. And to save time in our workshop, we shared all those threat definitions and the list of potential mitigation actions with the attendees through a handout at the end of day one. And then in his presentation, Dave Stangle walked through the risk analysis process and some of the actions the city has pursued since the original planning effort. We ended the long-term supply presentation planning discussion, I'm sorry, by having Chris Bromley come back and present some updated information specifically on the threats of curtailment of water. Several recent actions related to curtailment have revealed more information about the threats and their potential impact on cities. Chris went over some of these and recommended new or reemphasized existing mitigation actions, among them, follow the development of the Treasure Valley groundwater model, monitor any discussions about creating an area of common groundwater supply in the Treasure Valley, which is a requirement for conjunctive management of water. And perhaps the most timely recommendation, which was already an existing action, diversify the city's water rights portfolio with surface water, including new storage. As you are probably aware, the city has opportunities to purchase space in two new water storage projects, the Anderson Ranch Dam Raise and the Cat Creek Energy Project. Analysis of the cost and benefit of participating in participating in these projects is difficult. But we do know that opportunities like this are extremely rare. The last water supply project was Lucky Peak, and it started in 1949. So we will be coming back to you to discuss these projects in the near future.
All right. And so we did also meet with some of the irrigation entities in Meridian. So you know, we've basically told you the story that our groundwater is good, our water rights are good, our supply network is good. But you do hear quite a bit about surface water shortages. And so Meridian has four primary irrigation districts within its boundaries. And another feature is that certain areas of Meridian use our potable water to irrigate lawns. So about 16% of our customers are on city water for irrigation. And so when we met with the irrigation districts, they had some information that they wanted us to share with residents to potentially help with irrigation shortages. And these conservation tips, you know, can also be useful for some of the city residents. So these are just kind of general good water conservation practices. So one of the things is be efficient with your irrigation practices. So a lot of people's sprinklers run at night, so you don't actually see where they're spraying or where they're, you know, are you overspraying? Do you have broken sprinklers? Are you ponding? So it's good to to maybe watch your sprinklers through one cycle and and make sure that you're you're efficiently watering. The other thing is check your irrigation or your sprinkler timing. So a lot of when new subdivisions are put in, the irrigation system box in your garage is set to water every single day to establish that new landscaping. Well, you may never think about changing that, and you may still be watering every single day. So check your your irrigation sprinkler box in your garage. Look at your timing. Make sure you're watering efficiently. Build your lawn's drought tolerance. So watering less often and promoting deeper root growth is a good way to build your lawn's health. You can also ziriscape where it makes sense. So the city does not generally prohibit ziriscaping, but you do need to check with your HOA because a lot of the HOAs have requirements. but you do need to check with your HOA because a lot of the HOAs have requirements around your landscaping. But one of the biggest messages we wanted to share was the time that you water matters. So because the irrigation districts must release reservoir storage water to account for peak hour use, the more we can spread out that peak hour, the better. So what we've been asked by the irrigation district is to sort of dispel the myth of not watering during the day. So it's better to spread out if you water with the surface irrigation water, it's better to spread out that watering in your neighborhood by day and time. So check your HOA, see if you have something set up in your neighborhood. And that, that spreading out of the peak allows them to shave down the amount of water that they have to deliver. If you're on city water for watering your landscape, we would also like you to try to avoid the peak times. And our peak times for city water is generally between five AM and nine AM. So if you water outside of that period, that's helpful for us. We did also want to point out, you can reach out to places like Zamzoes to give you watering tips and help with your lawn health. So in summary, you know, Meridian's domestic supply is in great shape now and into the future as far as supply and water rights. Our staff have been working to identify and mitigate long-term threats for over a decade. As Kyle mentioned, we should continue long-term planning and be prepared to take advantage of, you know, opportunities as they present themselves, if they make sense. The water supply in the valley is complex, but it's also robust. And then residents can make an impact by practicing water conservation tips and being water wise to help with our, our overall water supply. And with that, that is a really quick summary of our workshop.
Thank you, Laura. I counsel any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you very much. I had the opportunity to attend the workshop and it was, it was really fantastic. I just was hoping that you would touch on, we talked about that there's not an issue with the, the water rights in terms of the volume that we are permitted to use. But there was a recommendation to diversify the water rates because, so can you go into more detail for council about why and what that means?
Sure. Councilwoman Pearl. So that's a good question. So all of our current water rights are for groundwater supply. So one of the things, and Kyle touched on it, it's called conjunctive management. So if, and the Eastern Snake River Plain is currently under conjunctive management. And that's where they've shown a direct hydrologic connection between the surface water and the groundwater. So if you're a groundwater pumper and you have the potential to impact senior surface right holders, they can curtail you and based on the age of your water rights, they can say you have to stop pumping because you're impacting this senior white water right holder. So a couple of things, if the age of your water right matters, but then also diversifying your portfolio and having different water rights. So all of ours are groundwater, it may be beneficial to have some sort of surface water right if that becomes available as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Terrific presentation. Like this is what I think of when we think of our workshop meetings. Like this is important information for council to have to potentially make decisions at a later point in time. I appreciate condensing two days' worth of stuff into twenty minutes. I know that's really, really hard. A couple of questions, and I'll start first kind of how you into the presentation talking about the irrigation districts and pressurized irrigation. What are the irrigation districts doing kind of proactively to preserve the water supply? I think that, you know, by and large, our citizens, our taxpayers don't always see the difference between City of Meridian and the irrigation districts. They're just mad that their HOA is now telling them they have to water their lawn every other day. So what are they doing proactively to help better retain our, our water in the valley? I recognize I'm putting you on the spot. You're not the irrigation districts.
Yeah, we did, Councilman Kavner, Mayor, we did meet with them. And I was unaware before that meeting that they are, they are actually doing some things I didn't know about. They are trying to capture more water and they've actually built some infrastructure. It used to be, you'd say, well, if, if that, that irrigation water is in the ditch and if nobody uses it, it's gonna go down the ditch and it's gonna be gone. And that was true to some extent, and to some extent it's still true, but it's less true now because they are doing more to recapture water that has gone past some pumping stations and they're able to put it back in delivery conveyances to be reused and so they can take less out of the reservoir. That's one thing. They are also, I think, I think the biggest thing, there's new leadership there, Greg Curtis and Mike. Can't remember Mike's last name. But I think the, the biggest thing they're doing is they're, they're not afraid to talk to us anymore. I think they are, they're welcome to discussions about how we might be able to partner in the future, how might we might be able to help each other and what we can do together to, to make the, to give our citizens the best benefit for the, for the, the surface water they have, that we have in the, in the Treasure Valley. So that's the biggest thing, I think.
Mr. Mayor, one additional for me.
Councilman Kavner.
I don't want you to take this the wrong way because I'm a big cheerleader for Meridian Water and I enjoy our tap water. But I, I have, over the past couple of years, I've had folks, and even my, my mother-in-law last week was kind of complaining about the taste of, of Meridian Water. And, and I'll be honest, it tastes differently than when I was a kid. And I don't know if that's that I've been conditioned to drink in this. Can you talk a little bit about what department's doing to maintain the quality of water? And is, is that feedback that you're hearing from people? And if so, have we changed how we treat our water or are we looking at different, doing different things to improve or do we think that's needed?
You wanna call Dennis or do you want me to?
Dennis, you can come up if you'd like. So several things that we're doing. You know, we have implemented water treatment to treat iron and manganese. As part of that, we do have to add some additional chlorine to make those filter filtration projects work. For the most part, all of that is used up and it doesn't enter the distribution system. We do when there's areas that have higher than normal chlorine, and I should say all the levels are still below regulatory threshold. But we do have some opportunities through flushing. We will be bringing a project forward in the FY twenty-three budget planning cycle to design some additional retention time in our system in areas where the, the retention time is shorter and that does help some of those taste and odor concerns.
We, we're with the treatment that we're, I'm sorry, always that way. So the treatment that we are adding to the system, we've got five new treatment facilities that are currently online and we've got about seven more planned for the next couple of years. We're now kind of messing with the, the chemical makeup of the water with our chlorination process. So as those new treatment facilities come on, it helps us blend the water together better. Right now, we've got two different kind of mixes going on within our managing with our flushing program and other operational activities.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Thanks. Wow, what a phenomenal presentation. Thank you so much for all the time and work that you guys have put into this important issue. Really, it's been phenomenal. And I guess I have a couple of points. I think this is a big education and communication opportunity. So I'd love it if this could be like a separate YouTube video linked to the City of Meridian's YouTube page about if you have questions about our water, so we could direct them to this presentation. And they could hear it, you know, folks could hear it for themselves. I did have one follow-up question. You know, I know the uranium content of our water, and it's nothing to panic about, comes from geology. I mean, the world is radioactive, but it is close to the EPA threshold from what I recall. Where is that in the CFP in terms of the potential to remove, you know, the uranium and get that not at the threshold, but as far below the threshold as we can economically and reasonably do so?
Councilwoman Scherer, that's a great question. So on the first comment, we actually are hosting a town hall on, I believe it's May twenty-sixth, and the topic will be water supply. So it'll be this presentation. And we are inviting the irrigation districts to that as well. And then for your second question on the uranium, so we have a project in our CFP. However, the newest sampling results that we've been taking are very promising and they're actually lower than the previous thresholds that we had seen. So depending on how those levels continue, we may or may not need to do that project. We also have another project that will enhance the blending quality of another area. So I don't have the specific dates off the top of my head of those projects, but there is a placeholder in the CFP to address that topic if it's needed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
That's really helpful. I, I know there are some wells that contribute more than others to the problem. And so I really appreciate the proactive approach and trying to blend that to a more acceptable threshold. I guess I'd just be curious for a little follow-up on like what level we're trying to manage to realistically over time. But I think that's great and I love the town hall idea. Hats off to you guys and the mayor's office for organizing this. I think it's really important. We all know how precious water is. And everyone sees or I just got my notice of my HOA, like, hey, the irrigation water might be going off for a while because of the drought. I think people have a tendency to conflate, you know, between the irrigation water and the city's water. And so I think that is important. The more we can educate people, the better. But thanks a lot.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglen.
Real quick, I, I appreciate the presentation. I was on council in two thousand eleven when they did that first water study and it was great to hear at the time that basically our, our valley has, is a big bathtub underneath us of water and we're in the center of that bathtub. And that bathtub is still full. From what you're, eleven years later, they're still reporting, which is great. But the planning to be able to know what we've, we're facing and build out and how we mitigate and increase storage capacity and do those things is, is great to hear. Also, yes, uranium arsenic always present. It's a natural entity. Fortunately, we don't have great problems, but a few areas that we do, you're managing that. And I, I appreciate all the work that you guys do to, to make our water plentiful and safe and wise use is always in order. So I hope your workshop is well attended on the twenty-sixth.
And Mayor, just so any residents that are listening, if you're curious, all of our water quality data is available on our website and you can look it up under the CCR and we'll give you our, our annual water quality, which will tell you where we're at with any of those thresholds.
So I have a question with the Bureau of Recreation project. How many additional feet are they hoping to catch, capture of what we're not able to currently store with that project?
Mr. Mayor, the, the Anderson Dam Ranch Raise is gonna be twenty-nine thousand acre feet of additional storage.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Do any communities lease unused water rights or capacity that they have but don't need? Is that an option?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borden, we have discussed leasing water rights as a mitigation option. The biggest problem with leasing water rights as a mitigation option is when you need those water rights, they're not gonna be available to lease because it's when everybody needs that water. We have a water bank that's, that's used in Basin sixty-three, that's the Boise Basin. And it's very inactive. The Suez Water actually does lease some water because they, they, they do surface water treatment as part of their system. So it's, it's possible. Pardon? We don't think it's one of the, it's certainly a mitigation action item. Probably not one that we think is, is one of the, gonna be one of the most effective when it comes down to the time you need it.
Council, any additional questions? Okay. Well, well, thank you and we'll forward to seeing what gets out to the community in various ways. Next item on the agenda is item sixteen, which was now the Police Department Fiscal Year twenty-two budget amendment in the not seat amount of two million three hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. I think the chiefs are both gonna deliver a presentation for all the, for the three items and take questions before we move into those items. So Chief, Chief?
Yeah, so Chief Bloom and I thought we'd do this together, public safety team. And we decided that I would go first, go through the Northwest Precinct and then he would go through the following fire stations in the GMP. And then we could answer any questions that you have at the end or at the end of each of the presentations. And before we get started, the first thing I would like to do is certainly recognize Lieutenant Jamie Leslie and Stacy Peachin from the police team for their work getting us here as well as our project manager for these projects, Stacy Redmond, for the work that they've done so far. So. So why are we here? Why did we decide to go forward with building in Northwest Precinct? The Meridian's mission statement is to provide the highest quality of service in partnership with our community to preserve and protect life and property through education, prevention and enforcement. And through our discussions, last budget session, when we got these approved, we certainly believe that the Northwest Precinct gets us further to that mission accomplishment. Certainly, it, it creates more accessibility for our public, our community in the Northwest, which is our farthest reaching part of the city and certainly causes us the most drive time in our patrol vehicles. It creates more time in the field for our officers that work in that area rather than having to go back to headquarters when they're doing their reports, when they're processing evidence and doing those types of things. And it should cut down on our response times in that area as well. And on top of that, with the growing inflation and our high rising fuel prices, it should cut down on our, our fuel consumption as well with those patrol vehicles that will be housed at this location and be utilized solely in this area rather than driving clear across town and back and forth multiple trips every day and hopefully cut down on the wear and tear of some of those vehicles and the vehicle mileage, which should help us as well. The other thing that I would say is very beneficial about this that some people don't realize is we're building a actual police station. We've, we've looked around at other communities that have tried to makeshift things, take a data center and try to turn it into a police station. And it's never worked out the way that they've wanted it to do or try to do a substation out of a mall. And those things just don't work. They're not effective. And quite frankly, you lose a lot of the pride that your employees have in their facilities. One of the things I've always kind of compared the Meridian Police Department too and the City of Meridian too is my alma mater, Boise State and Boise State football when it comes to facilities. This city has always been forward thinking. They have understood the importance of those facilities to the employees and to the community that we serve. And, and we've always done a, a great job doing that with past councils as well as the current council that sits here before us today. So some of the things that we knew we were going to run into were some cost issues when we initially discussed these projects. What we could not account for certainly was the unstable market that we're sitting in now. The supply chain issues that have continued and quite frankly, a lack of a workforce and inflation. And so when we looked at these, we, our original design estimates, just to give you some ideas of what we're facing. For structural still, it was a twenty-nine or twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollar estimate. When the actual bid estimates came in, that was three hundred and four percent above what had been predicted and came in at eighty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. And then another large ticket item, when you look at the HVAC system, design estimates were two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And the bid estimates came in at a hundred and forty-eight percent over that at five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Certainly things that from our perspective, we really, we really could not control. We did look at as much value engineering as we could and, and the police department accepted four hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in value engineering. Some of the larger ticket items in that, a hundred and three thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Some of the larger ticket items in that 103,000 dollars, 374 dollars uh where we changed the type of fencing that we were going to utilize at this location. We did a change from vented lockers. Um, if you've been into the police locker rooms, um, they smell like a high school locker room with the the sweaty vests and the things that are stored there. We looked at a a venting system. Um, but when it came down to to value engineering, uh, we chose to go with the way we've, we've done things in the past and and that that saved us 126,000 dollars. And then another 70,000 dollars uh value engineered into acoustic tiles um versus the original design. One thing that uh I will point out is as a a police department, we have always been conscious of our community's dollars. Uh, we've had three projects, major projects with the Public Safety Training Center um that have all come in on time and under budget. Scenario Village is uh coming in at with about a 580,000 dollar savings um based on some decisions that were made on whether to go forward with certain parts of the project or whether it was more of a benefit to save that money and look further down the road at other projects. As well as our head headquarters tenant improvement, um, it's going to come in at almost 200,000 dollars under budget. So again, I have to thank uh Jamie Leslie and and our Stacy Peachin and Stacy Redmond. They've done a phenomenal job on those and uh the police department has a history of coming in on time and under budget. And while it's going to be a chore on this project, I have no doubt that that we'll be able to do that. And in the end, as we move forward in the process, um, we'll continue analyzing ways to save money throughout this process. We've done that on every project that we've been involved in and that's not going to change. There is a reason that Jamie Leslie is in charge of this project as well. He understands how these projects work and he always builds a phenomenal relationship with our our general contractors and uh works very, very well with them, uh bouncing ideas back and forth and finding ways to save us money. And so, but ultimately our budget amendment moving forward will be the 2 million dollars, 2,367,000 dollars and 918 dollars, sorry. And with that, I can stand for questions now or we can have the chief give his presentation and we can answer the questions at the end.
If we might, you go ahead and do your presentation as well.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Much like what uh Chief Pastor Chia said, I'd also like to thank Chief Butterfield and unfortunately uh Chief Winkler, who is having emergency surgery as we speak, as well as the project manager, uh Stacy Redmond for being the project manager for this. So they've done a phenomenal job thus far and we wouldn't be where we are had it not been uh for their efforts so far. So where I'd like to begin with this is just a bit of a little bit of reorientation to our project and what we're what we're asking to do. Talk a little bit about task, purpose and a desired end state. Oops. Okay, so uh the background of this, one of the, one of the key features about Meridian is striving to be the West premier community to work, live and raise a family. And some of the things that have come out recently for the Meridian Fire Department is we've pursued a uh community risk assessment and a standards of cover document is a a a shocking surprise in our capacity, our distribution and our reliability to get resources to 911 calls in a prompt, efficient manner. And the adverse impact to that, of course, is I've said it before, I'll say it again, is time is tissue. We can't put heartbeats back in, we can't put blood back into the body and we can't mitigate an emergency unless we actually can put hands on patients. One of the other uh adverse consequences of inappropriate or unacceptable response times is that fire and the nature of fire events, fire doubles in size and and severity every 15 to 30 seconds. Why this is important is if we look at the uh, you know, the construction request and the population of Meridian, all we need to do is look at your guys' weekly agenda. The 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 conversation about approving Platts, the high permit activity in the City of Meridian and the addition of new residents to the community every day. So if we were to go off of the 2020 census and 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 agree that the City of Meridian has 117 or 120,000 residents, we can landmark this and we can ac- actually understand if there is a right size for what a Meridian Fire Department looks like to successfully serve the community. And I draw your attention to these two graphs. And the the first graph illustrates the number on a national level um of firefighters per 1,000 residents. The national average for professional fire departments, not volunteer, but paid professional fire departments like the Meridian Fire Department is 1.63 firefighters per thousand. If you'll notice the little Chevron down there, the City of Meridian currently has about 0.7 firefighters per thousand. So this is about an image and understanding the right sizedness, if you will, of what the Meridian Fire Department would look like. The slide or the graph to the next, uh, to the, to the right of that illustrates fire department communities, um, I'm sorry, communities that have demographics associated with the number of fire stations. And if you'll notice where I've circled down at the bottom, the City of Meridian is kind of hanging on at the bottom end of where 81% of fire uh of of communities in the country are. So that 81% um signifies uh organizations, communities that have between six and 19 fire stations, we're at the bottom end of that spectrum. So this is about right sizedness. Are we asking for too much? Are we building too much? Are we growing too fast, too soon? And I would argue that no, in fact, we're not. The next piece of this presentation is to talk about a reorientation to that timeline. What has happened? What has transpired over the past year? Um, we did have budget estimates that went through the process in in March through June of last year where uh the budget was approved to build and construct uh stage fire station seven and eight. We had two development periods and those periods occurred in the first of this year. We had two bid periods, the first of which was in February and that was for the fire station, Station Seven, not only the building but the site and then Station Eight, if you could imagine it floating in space. So it was for the building of seven and the site development and then it's just the the construction of the building of Station Eight. That bid period closed and then we had a second bid development for the Station Eight site as well as for the uh, the entirety of the police precinct. Those bid estimates and the results of those were presented to council on the 5th of uh April. And um, value engineering, uh Chief Pastor Chia brought it up, value engineering for both of these projects from police and fire has has taken place from the inception of both of these products, trying to find the best uh dollar, uh best value of the tax dollar to to provide the level of 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 an outcome of a of a building that is going to correctly meet the needs of the community and the departments. So as we look at it right now, the GMP for Station Seven and Eight, including the owner expense, and this was as presented last week by ESI. Station Seven is overestimated by 1.3 million dollars. Station Seven is over by 621,000 dollars. Both of those project estimates collectively over by 14% respectfully um from for Station Eight, it's 9%. For Station, it's 19%. Analyzing that and to give a little bit of deeper understanding of why there's this disparate number there, um, we were unable to cost share at Station Seven like we were at Station Eight. Baked into the in into the product, so to speak, was the re uh utilizing the same uh site um building design at Station Eight that we at used at Station Seven saves the taxpayers 90,000 dollars just by using the same design. At Station Seven, there's a CDA with the Brighton um uh Brighton Corporation for that Collector Road. Both of those changes uh is where you see that 700,000, the 300 quarter million dollar increase in cost for Station Seven versus Station Station Eight. Um, as was presented uh to the members of council and the mayor uh on Wednesday of last week in the packet of information were the um VE that was accepted. And there's a half a million dollars, over a half a million dollars for Station Seven, over a half a million dollars for Station Eight. Both of those collectively account for 1.1 million and some change in value engineering. And I think uh again, to Chief Pastor Chia's point, none of the value engineering that was done compromises the integrity of the structure, the ability to respond. These were, these were style things. These were a change in paint. These were a change in the composition of the tiles. This was a transition from using like doing a tile floor to a polished conflict concrete floor. Absolutely no compromise was was is found in any of these value engineering efforts. And so ultimately this evening, as we move forward, we're really proposing to the mayor and the council two options. And the first of which is that we do nothing. And if we do nothing, that will void the contracts and none of the projects, neither the police precinct or the two fire stations will move forward, which will allow us the opportunity to rebid. But I think it's a foregone conclusion that those rebids will come back at a higher cost. Um, you all may be aware, uh, the City of Meridian Fire Department is is pursuing a safer grant. Uh, that's the Staffing and Emergency uh Responder Grant. Um, it, there's 24 firefighters that are rolled up in that package to the tune of 13 million dollars over three years. These two stations are inextricably bound to that safer grant. So should we be fortunate enough to be noticed, given a notice of award, we would have to not accept that uh that that award and 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 not uh bring those those employees on with the fire department. Um, related to the fire uh police department, they would have to pay back uh collected impact fees that were that were captured for the Station Eight, which also affects the fire department because part of the site development was covered with the impact fees. And then on a, on a larger scale, uh, not moving these projects forwards moves us further and further away from the strategic plan focus area of public health and public safety. We're not meeting the demands and the needs of the community as they're evolving. Certainly, we're we're riding coattails in in many regards. And then finally, um, and on a personal note for me related to our department is um further lowering our Idaho Survey and Rating Bureau status. We're currently at a three, a level three, which is very low. And weekly, we get phone calls from developers and from new homeowners asking the question, what is the insurance service rating bureau for the City of Meridian? And we have to tell them it's a three. And that is really on the lowest end of what would be considered acceptable for fire protection and services being provided. This is directly related to the constituents and business owners um ability to get insurance and to um have insurance coverage. My expectation and my hope is to elevate this from a three to a one. I know that's a big leap, but these stations move us in that direction, solidly in that direction. So the recommended course of action this evening and what uh the chief and I are asking is that we move forward with these three budget amendments and that we approve the GMP as presented. Talking with the Finance Department of City of Meridian, the CFO, um, he has stated that we are financially able to accommodate this and more so we're able to accommodate it with no alterations to the CFP as it's currently modeled. Anecdotally, and I think that it's worth mentioning, what what does it cost to build a fire station or an emergency services uh facility in 2022? Um, as published in the Lewiston Tribune, um, the Lewiston Fire Department went through the same process that we went through last year for their FY22 budget. They looked to build a one, a 10,000 square foot uh fire station in Lewiston. They budgeted 4 million dollars. Their budget estimates have come back at 6.9 million. Similarly, uh Ada County Paramedics own a piece of land in Meridian and wanted to develop that to enhance the service that they can provide in the City of Meridian. However, they budgeted 6 million dollars and their budget estimates came back at 10.2 million dollars. Ironically, and I don't know if it's coincidentally, both of those are off by 58%. Basically preventing them from moving forward. And so with our 14% over, I think that we've done, and I should say point again, uh, give a hand to our design and development team at doing a great job of sharpening the pencil and getting us to 14% over on those two projects. As Chief Pastor Chia also said, and I think it's worth mentioning, VE efforts are going to continue to be ongoing throughout the projects. It doesn't stop here. We're going to continue to sharpen the pencil again and make sure that we're utilizing the tax dollars to the best of our ability as we move forward. And so our presentation will conclude with a request for an amendment for Fire Station Seven in the amount of 1,343,118 dollars and four cents. A second amendment uh for Fire Station Eight at 621,548 dollars and 96 cents. And then a third amendment for the Northwest Northwest Precinct in the amount of 2,367,918 dollars. And then finally, to approve the GMP as uh was presented by ESI, and I believe that there's an amendment to that um GMP proposal that you've been, that's been distributed to you um in the amount of 20 million dollars, 622 or 20 million, 622,516 dollars. And with that, I think both Tracy and I will stand for questions from council and the mayor.
Thank you. Council, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Just want to understand a little bit more about the value engineering process. So a couple of questions. Um, was there always an intention to do the value engineering and it did not start until October 2021 because that's when there was enough detailed information to start adjusting the numbers? Because I just, I'm trying, I I'm trying to get a sense of was there always that intent or was, were, are we only doing this because we came over on the bid? And if if that is the case, then why did the contractor not encourage us to do the value engineering from the beginning? So that's, that's my first question.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Pearl, uh, I can tell you that the value engineering started with the development of the project. But more specifically into your point, as bids came back and as a better, a more fuller view of what the project was looking like, there were things that that stood out and and one of those were um, for example, tiling for the roof. And Chief Butterfield questioned about the tiling and said, hey, what's the deal here? And he said, well, you you want this. And he said, well, is there an alternative product? Well, yeah, this is, this is a a texture, a a pattern. If you remove the pattern or the texture off of this ceiling tiling, it's 50,000 dollars less. It's like, well, let's please do that. So those were the things that were discovery moments throughout the process that that said, for example, a 40-year composite shingle on a roof versus a 20, a 30-year composite shingle was a 30,000 dollar difference. And so it was just these things that were noticed throughout the process. It's like, okay, this, this doesn't make sense. And the, and the value, the long term, the 30, 40-year value is not there to spend collectively 80,000 dollars over those two items, just as an example. And um, the number of value engineered items are extensive and I believe they were in the packet that that were sent to you. They're, they're small. Not all of them are these huge million dollar chunks. They were 50, 30, 80,000 dollars that that collectively added up over you know, the the scope of of the multiple projects.
Mr. Mayor, one more question if I may.
Councilman Pearl.
So um, are any of the decisions made regarding actual um you know, products that are going to be used, excuse me, such that, well, here's, here's a simplistic example. You can put in vinyl fencing, you can put in cedar fencing. One's going to require a lot more future maintenance than the other. Do we have any situations where it may be better for us to spend a little more on some of these such that the future maintenance won't be uh, you know, an additional cost 10 years from now, 15 years from now? I want to make sure we're not also creating a a different kind of issue in the future.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Pearl, I'd like to recognize Chief Butterfield on that one.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor, council members, yeah, to answer your question, that was part of the value engineering process and we did take into account a lot of those concerns. Does the benefit of not spending the money today outweigh the risk of ongoing maintenance over time? So as that extensive list was looked at, we certainly took into consideration just your question and made sure that we were not uh, we were evaluating that and 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 working with specifically uh even people within the city that uh Max, who's in charge of facilities, he was in those meetings as well. So that we made sure that you know, as we make these decisions, that it is in the best interest, long term, for city facilities. I can make sure we are getting the proper materials for the buildings.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thanks. Um, you know, I'm, I'm bummed that the cost has gone up, but I'm not surprised just based on the environment that we're in. I think it is an advantage to, you know, have these projects happen now and not wait, I mean, the cumulative effects of inflation, if it continues at the level it is at would be really significant over time. I think that's a strong argument to moving it forward. Um, I have an important question, though. I want to make sure, and I don't know how, whether it's safer grants, whether it's help from the rural, how it's going to happen, but I want to make sure we are committed to opening these fire stations fully staffed.
Yes. I'll speak for that, but yes, they're all in the budget that you guys will see. Uh, all the positions are in the budget for this upcoming uh year. Um, and we've been working with finance on on how that's accounted for based upon the staffing model the chief has in place yet, but the safer grant could change that to require it to move faster than we have planned.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilwoman Cavan. I recognize this was done kind of before your time, but do you know what the total cost was to build Station Six?
Just one moment, sir. Councilman Cavan, that was 6.5 million for the record.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I lied, I thought of something else. So I imagine that the contractor will go over a timeline for construction, hopefully in a detailed way such that we'll know when products are being ordered or have a general idea. Obviously, we need to do that for financial piece of it. But there is some indication that the market may adjust on some of these items before the end of the year. Is there a chance to recoup some costs if the market adjusts on some of the actual product items? Meaning that, so all of us have gone by construction sites where lumber and steel have been ordered and they sit there for six months because they're trying to make sure that they, you know, are all ordered at once and then they're there ready for when the subcontractor needs to use them. Can we look at the timing of when things are ordered and maybe, you know, possibly consider ordering some of them later to see if there's costs that go down? Or do we take too much risk that the cost will go up?
I think that you run a couple of risks there. One, that the cost may go up. And two, with the way the supply chain's working and with the way bids are working, sometimes they're not giving you, you're getting a bid and it's 30 days and that's it. So we can have those discussions, but I think that's probably going to be a little bit of a stretch.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Just to chime in, I think that's the other side of the GMP, right? So because there's a maximum price contract, we get the advantage of locking in a price with ESI unless we make changes. And please, let's make sure we're not going to make a bunch of changes because that'll kill us. But then on the other hand, you're right, if commodity markets move, which they may, if we go into a recession or something changes, we don't get the advantage of the cost savings. So I personally just get a lot of comfort from the protection of having a GMP in this type of situation, but there are advantages and disadvantages.
Council, any additional questions for the chiefs? Okay. Thank you. So with that, we do have Item 16 before you at this time for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, is that the revised 16, the Police Department? Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
They're separate, but they're all kind of, they're one. So I'm just going to provide some comment here. I think it's, as we approach the next four items, it's been, well, it's been over 12 months. I've raised a number of concerns. I'm talking directly to police and fire. I appreciate Tracy and Chris, both of you showing praise for those that have helped get you here, Charlie, Jamie, everyone that has been a part of this. It makes a big difference. And you're right to recognize that it's a team. And I guess I've got to take a step back, a mindful of the role that council has and the role that we don't have, and my concerns in particular. I've got several ideas that I've expressed over the last 12 months on ways to make this efficient. And the council role is budgetary in trying to ensure that we can set up a structure that makes it cost-effective to get what you want. There's a lot of details in the delivery that we don't control, and that's frustrating to me in particular. The manner in which it's bid, the timing of the bids, who gets designated as project manager internally for the city and how it's run, that's, it's not within the purview. So a lot of the concerns that I've raised personally, I think, hit some of those things. And it's not any critique on anybody in police or fire and how they do what they do, whether it's one station, two stations in a precinct, or whatever the end result is. It's just frustrating. I personally believe that there was a more cost-effective way to do it. And I'm a stink on that topic because I think when funds get expended more than perhaps they needed to be, that means an apparatus doesn't get purchased, personnel can't be taken care of as well as they otherwise could. It's a loss for police and fire, perhaps directly. That's why I'm kind of a grump on that and had been back 12 months ago. I sincerely believe there was a more cost-effective way to do it and to sequence these things. Today, it's presented as all are one. It just is. It's packaged, you take it or leave it. That's the process I was not in support of. I didn't think it was the most cost-effective, but it's where we are. And I'm certainly not going to stand in the way and deny this entire thing by any stretch. And I said at the budget hearing, the concept of even doing one station, perhaps a precinct, something we've never done before, something to celebrate, for the community to celebrate, this is a big deal. This does a lot to improve service to our community, and that's what matters most. Council should fight on topics that allow it to be more cost-effective. I think the intent is to have a better end result. That was my intent for sure because we have the ability to do what we're doing today. And quite frankly, if the bids were 70% higher, we could do it all. We really could. Unlike Lewiston and some other communities, we're blessed with decisions from folks way before us that have given us the grace and ability to, we could pay 15 million for each. And I mean, you just could. And I'm mindful of that ability to do so because folks before us were grumpy stinks on budgetary matters, right? And with the best interest. So savings here is to do Station Nine and Ten or Precinct Three. So that's the reason that I've been adamant in some disagreements and different ways to do it, but also mindful of and respectful of the role of council versus the role of the mayor and in how these things get implemented. So probably could take a step back from some of my concerns, understanding those different roles. So with that, I'm going to support this, absolutely. Police and Fire is just top of the list, it just is. And you all have worked your ass. You have, you've just worked it off, all shooting for the same goal. You just have, just serve our community, right? It's what makes Meridian great, I know that. And value engineering, all of that work, Jamie, Charlie, everyone that you've worked with, that's the goal. That's what you've been trying to do to make this successful. So appreciate those efforts a lot. I just want to commit that we'll be adamant going forward to ensure anything the council can do to make this cost-effective, hold people's feet to the fire. ESI, you're hearing the message, right? That too, you're in this with us, that we want to make sure that's cost-effective. We want to have savings, if at all possible, for the folks that follow us. So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the time to share that. It ties into all four of the next items, kind of explains what I've discussed offline with a lot of you about my concerns and opportunities to do things better, but also want to make sure it clarifies my overall support and excitement for what our community's going to get. So thank you for those efforts.
Thank you. Council, additional? Councilwoman Perrow.
Before we consider a motion, I do have one more question about something that was mentioned in the presentation, which is how are we able to approve four and a half million-ish in increases and it not affect the CFP for Fire and Police?
I think the short answer is savings from last year were in excess of what were anticipated. That's going to be probably one of the short answers. Also, budgetary increases, much like the state has received in terms of revenue sharing through sales tax, that were not anticipated at those levels. So it's excess revenue to the city that was not anticipated at the levels that came in. And hopefully Todd doesn't think I said that the wrong way.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, just a comment. I remain excited about the opportunity. I think it's important. I think expanding our level of service is important and especially our response times. Still supportive of it, appreciate your commitment to make sure that when they are open, they're ready to hit the ground running. I think that's really important. That gives me a lot of comfort that we're doing the right things for the right reasons. And I know it is, I understand the concerns that Councilman Borton mentioned, and I respect all the council in working through those concerns. And, you know, it's a big deal. You know, I think in this environment, moving this forward makes sense, and that's just where I fall on it. But I appreciate all the work, I just want to say all the work that I know both departments and really the whole city has put into this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I echo the comments of Councilman Borton as well. At the end of the day, it's the end result that we all care about the most. We want to be able to provide or continue to provide a level of service to our community that the residents, the taxpayers of our city have come to expect. And I'll be in support, there's certainly not going to be in disagreement. Process was a little wonky, I wish we could have done it a different way, wish we could have started building, you know, Station Seven years ago. That's a conversation for a different time, and you all have heard my concerns, and so that's not a surprise. But there's just one thing that I want to say, that you have our full support and faith that when this is going, that you guys are going to do what's best for the community because you always have. There's absolutely no doubt about that. Know that we're close if you need us. Know that we're your biggest advocates and your biggest cheerleaders, whatever we can do to help. Just like always, we're here. Keep up the good work, and I can't wait to see what these buildings are going to look like. Excited for it, I know our community is excited for it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogden.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone's comments tonight, this afternoon, I guess. You know, they talk about artificial intelligence and how, you know, machines are learning. Well, this is a case of human intelligence. We take things, we work through things, and we learn and we adapt, and we might do things a little bit different next time, but we've learned from the process and learned from each other. And that's a great way to do things. And we always want to get it perfectly the first time, but it doesn't always work that way. And we deal with circumstances that we find ourselves into, supply chain issues, inflation, all these things that we have to deal with. But Councilman Borton, I thought his comments were spot on about, you know, how we stand on the shoulders of those that came before us and their process of budgeting, looking ahead to the future, seeing the needs, saving for it, and finding ways to fund it in ways that has the least amount of impact to our taxpayers, provides the greatest value, is just so important. And I'm glad we're carrying on that tradition the best that we can in the times that it presents itself. So I just appreciate everyone's comments and their involvement in this. And to our folks, police and fire, the staff, you guys did great work. And we're just glad that we can see this past the finish line, so when the time comes, we know our residents will have the service they need and deserve for this community. So thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Cavan.
Start, last week, I was pretty salty, to say the least. That's diplomatic, I didn't curse, but I was pretty salty. I had a chance last night to call both the chiefs and apologize, and I want to apologize to everybody here in the room for being a little more crass. It's not the staff, it's sometimes just the messenger's the one who gets shot, and that wasn't my intention. This process has been frustrating, but the folks that we work with have made it better, and I appreciate you all. And my other council members have said, we've got full faith and confidence in our staff. I guess my ask would be, as moving forward as we explore Stations Nine and Substation Two and other capital projects, we're really looking to you to come tell us when we need it, when we need it. Tapping the brakes on Station Seven was a million-dollar decision, and I think council all wishes that we could have moved that station a long time ago. I know many of you in the room wanted to do that too. And so as council, we look to you as our staff leaders, tell us when we need to do these projects in the right time and the future. We're going to be looking to you to tell us the when and know that, like Councilmember Burton said, we're here to support you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I'm going to start off with the police.
That is the only one up right now, yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burton.
I move that we approve item, I guess it would be 16, formerly 18, Police Department Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Amendment in the not-to-exceed amount of $2,367,918 for North Precinct Construction Project.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve Item 16. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Barrow.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Ogden.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, the item is agreed to. Next item is Item 17, which is Fire Department Budget Amendment in a not-to-exceed amount of $1,343,118 for Fire Station Number Seven.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I move that we approve Item 17, the Budget Amendment for the Fire Department in a not-to-exceed amount, not-to-exceed amount of $621,549 for Fire Station Eight. Did I take it out of order?
Took that out of order.
Good Lord. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Break that, I'm going to instead, I'll move for the approval of Item 16, the Fire Department Budget Amendment in the not-to-exceed amount of $1,343,118 for Fire Station Number Seven
I have a motion, a second to approve Item 17, which is for the $1,343,118 for Fire Station Number Seven Construction. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Barrow.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Ogden.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I move that we approve the next one, Budget Amendment for the Fire Department in the not-to-exceed amount of $621,549 for Fire Station Number Eight Construction.
Sorry. I have a motion, a second to approve Item 18, in the amount of $621,549. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Barrow.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Ogden.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, the item is agreed to. Next item up is Item 19, which is approval of the guarantee maximum price amendment to ESI for construction management, general contractor service for Fire Stations Seven, Eight, and Precinct One for not-to-exceed amount of $20,622,516. Is Stacy or Alex, you have any comments you'd like to make on this item this evening? Do you have a?
Mr. Mayor.
Keith, would you like to come up and talk about the item? Do you have change?
Mr. Mayor, council members, yeah, it was just a minor change. ESI had written a couple clauses into the attachment B for escalation charges in case they addressed them or came into a situation where costs escalated. That cost is only subject, or the escalation clause is only subject essentially to their contingency, which is about a 3%, 3.5% of their construction cost. So it's not the entire project. But we did ask that they notify the city and communicate with our capital project manager, Stacy, prior to utilizing any of that. They've agreed to do that, they made that change for us and submitted that back to us. The other one that I brought to your attention was the COVID-19 protocols, and that's any cost that they may incur due to government regulations that are implied or implemented that they have to comply with. That's not out of the ordinary in this. So that's not out of the ordinary in this uh, market that we're in now.
Counsel, any questions? Yeah, thank you.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
With that explanation, it doesn't change the bottom line whatsoever. Um, I would move approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to E S I for Construction Management, General Contractor Services for Fire Stations Seven and Eight, Police Precinct Number One, for the not-to-exceed amount of twenty million, six hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve item nineteen. Is there discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Barrow.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Ogden.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries. The item is agreed to. I just want to say thank you to everybody. Um, I know now the real hard work starts in a lot of ways for everybody to get us to this point in time. Um, so I'm excited to see where we go from here and what we're able to accomplish together as a team and and to beat council's expectations uh, for all these projects combined. So uh, good luck. Uh, my my understanding is they're going to get started on this stuff here in the next couple of weeks. So um, whether or not there's a ceremony or not, I don't know where that stands, but be ready, counsel. So, thank you. You can stick around. So we'll we'll go ahead and move on to uh, ordinances. Uh, item twenty, ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen seventy-eight. Ask to correct read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. It's an ordinance related to Friendship Subdivision H twenty-twenty-one zero-zero-eight-three for annexation of Lot Two of Block One of Blithe State Subdivision. As shown on the official plat thereof on file in the Office of the Ada County, Idaho Recorder, being the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section Thirty Township Four North Range One East Boise Meridian Ada County, Idaho. And being more particularly described in Attachment A, an annex in certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Meridian, as requested by the City of Meridian. Establishing determining the land use zoning classification of ten point zero-six acres of land from R U T to R eight medium-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code. The writing and copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council. You heard this order spread by title. Is there a basis like it's read in its entirety? Say no, call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. This is your motion.
Mister Mayor.
Councilone Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number two-two dash one-nine-seven-eight with a suspension of rules.
Second.
Have a motion of second to approve item twenty, ordinance number twenty-two dash nineteen seventy-eight under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Barrow.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Ogden.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries. The item is agreed to.
Mister Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Guys have it. We are adjourned.